All right, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. If we could go ahead and get our communication started.
Dr. Craig.
Family Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for the opportunity to gather together and name the children, teachers, and other employees of Granville County Public Schools. We thank you for the opportunity to learn today from people who know what they're talking about and who will later stash them. Thank you for your son. Thank you for all that you do. And please bless us both today and every day as we move forward. And your name, I agree.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, so we're going to get started with item two, athletic events and admissions.
Thank you so very much. This afternoon, we thank everyone for assembling. Before we begin, we thank everyone for making that swift pivot. The Internet did not want to work with us today, and we decided instead of just sitting there and seeing if it would self-correct, let's try to do some correction ourselves so that we could let parents see what we were doing because they just really supported the topic. So thank you to everyone for that. This afternoon in the area of athletic events, admissions, payments, we've had some inquiries here because something new was applied throughout the state this year through the North Carolina Athletic Association, and this included Granville County Public Schools. This is the online payments for tickets. And this began as a result of COVID and not necessarily the handling of monies right there at the gate and also not having to go late at night to deposit funds and deal with the transaction of those dollars. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Stan Winborn, and I believe he had a partner in crime on this. He might not be here yet, Mr. Timberlake. But Dr. Winborn, will you take it over for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Dr. McLean. Good afternoon, board members. It's good to see you all. Just going to run through a quick overview of the recent changes that have occurred with regard to the purchasing of our athletic tickets. Just first of all, to give you a little bit of context, currently, the cost for admission to all of our middle school events is $7 per event, and for high school events, basketball and football, it's $8, and all other sports, $7. As Dr. McLean mentioned, prior to the pandemic, we sort of had the traditional practice of tickets being sold at the gate or, you know, right near the entrance to wherever the event would be at our schools. But as you all know, kind of that late summer, early fall, well, really, of the spring of 2019, when the pandemic hit, we had major interruptions. And that spanned over the past two years. And some of those seasons were canceled entirely. Others were partial and modified in many respects. And so we were looking for solutions so that we could continue having these events and minimize the amount of contact and interaction between individuals. So Mr. Timberlake and some of his athletic directors in consultation and sort of research around the state with what was going on ended up finding a company called Varsity Ticks. And they provided sort of a one-stop solution for e-ticketing so that families could easily just go online 24/7 and purchase tickets in that sort of no-contact interaction. Of course, you can see there in bullets the benefits this provided. As Dr. McLean mentioned, it is difficult because, you know, the purchasing of tickets was largely a cash transaction prior to this. And so there were a lot of measures that needed to be in place. It was very labor-intensive. And then, of course, there was the issue of after an event, trying to make sure that the cash was deposited and received correctly. And really, what we found was that districts all around us had actually moved away from this model. And so that was taken this past fall to our board attorney for their review. And then we shifted to the use of Varsity Ticks. And we know that there have been some concerns, but we've tried to provide alternative options for members of the community who may not have easy access to online or a credit card or debit card payment so that, you know, we've allowed anyone, whenever a school is open, to go to the school and go ahead and purchase those traditional tickets so that can be done using cash. They just need simply go during business hours and do that. And, of course, prior to the actual event. So, you know, we realize that's not necessarily as convenient since some of the games start. For instance, football games start later in the evening. That means that someone does need to go by the school during the day, sometime prior to the event to purchase them. In addition to this, of course, we also are hearing that there's a concern for senior citizens who maybe would like to have a discount attending our games. We have learned that the state of North Carolina already provides that option for members of the community, and they can get those passes through senior centers. This is not something that Granville County Public Schools is associated with. This is a statewide effort, and it's for any regular North Carolina High School Athletic Association event. And so that's an option available to the public as well. Also, our HR department generously extends a golden pass to all of our retirees. Just sort of as a parting courtesy to our hard-working, dedicated staff, they get a laminated card, and they're able to use that as for free admission to any regular season event in all of our venues at home. So that's basically it in a nutshell. I'm happy to try to answer any questions. I think Mr. Timberlake, he and I may have missed messages in the change of venue today, so I'll try to answer. And if I can't, I'll get with him and get back to you.
Is this an app that you put on your phone or you have a website?
I believe it. So the, I don't know if there's a downloadable app. I do know that it can be used as a website. But if, maybe if you're a frequent user, I'm sure that there's some way to get it conveniently put on your phone.
What color is ours? It's ordinary. You got gold out there, and you got all kinds.
I know what's good.
We haven't got a thing. I'm upset.
Work on that, Dr. Williams.
I'm sorry. Okay, as you go. There you go.
Any other questions?
Just a question. Is there a fee involved in, like a subscription fee or anything to use?
Yes, I believe there's a small transaction fee that applies as well. So it does add a small additional cost. I don't know what that is off the top of my head. Mr. Timberlake had that. I can get it for you.
Like a fee on top of the ticket?
There is, a processing fee.
But not for the district to use it, like a subscription or something that we have to subscribe to?
I need to get that answered. Mrs. Day worked with Calvin Timberlake on the selection of this. Can you find out?
I will.
I will say, Mrs. Day and Mr. Timberlake did extensive research together on this one and tried to find the best deal they could find. We also need to add, this really helped with those who take up tickets that time of night. You know, the deposit has to be made that night when funds are taken up. So this eliminated that piece. So that's a safety issue at night. And also, in the height of COVID, when people were wearing the gloves and the masks and all of the regalia of COVID, this eliminated touching money and the exchange of money from hand to hand because it was online and people would just show the funds at the gate for getting here. So there were various reasons. Now, when we go away for games, same thing for those from our district. We have to show, we purchase our tickets online, and we show our phones when we go away. So most districts around us use an app as well.
Is there the possibility of expanding this outside of athletic event?
There certainly is.
Performances and other things?
Yes, there is.
Any other questions? All right, so let's move on to item 2.02, update on homeschool and charter.
Absolutely. When we conducted task force work last year, Lauren, you can go ahead and pass that over.
I have a question there. Are you in the call room?
Okay, that's okay.
Okay. When we conducted task force work last year, on several of our task forces, various questions came up that were quite fair, and we did not have hard data to support responses. There were good feelings, there were good emotions, but in terms of quantifiable data, we did not have that for the district. So we were asked to compile some questions whereby we could use Walltricks or some sort of vehicle to get good responses. So Mrs. Lauren Curtis is going to walk you through some questions that could be asked of people who have either left the district to go to charter schools or homeschools or have never come to Granville County Public Schools. The question we were asked was this, do you know why? Do you know why? So there were feelings around it, but in terms of hard data about it, we needed to develop questions. And we'd like to send these questions to individuals in charter schools and homeschools because we know where we send funds, so we're able to do that. But we want to make sure we're asking the right questions. So that's where you come in. Are these questions the right questions? So Ms. Curtis, just wanted to get some backdrop to that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, Dr. McLean. Good afternoon, board members. It's good to see you again. This is a very brief anonymous survey that will be sent out to our homeschool and charter parents. They will, everyone will receive a postcard with a QR code on it. They'll be able to scan the QR code and pull up the survey. But the survey itself will be anonymous. So we won't know, you know, I'll know, you know, that a particular household answered the survey, but I won't know what their answers were. But it will allow us to keep track of how many responses we had and make sure to little bit more than once. And so this survey is pretty quick to complete. It asks the number of students they have, then our grades K through 12, what their base school would be if their students were in Granville County Public Schools, if they've ever attended one of our schools, what type of school their student attends. And then we've got three questions to help us determine why they may have made the choice not to enroll in Granville County Schools and then asking what might make them reconsider. So I'll point out this drag and drop box because you may be wondering where I got these factors from. I looked at several research studies around school choice, and these were the most common reasons that families indicated that they chose to choose a different avenue of education, so I included those here. And then we have two open-ended questions at the end. Is there anything else you'd like to share about your decision not to enroll in Granville County Public Schools? And is there anything that might make you reconsider enrolling your child or children anywhere in Grandville County Public Schools? So it's a very brief survey. Again, it will be anonymous, but we think that this will provide us some great information. We'll be able to use both the drag and drop to look at those major factors that parents frequently cite. And then I'll be able to use some text analysis on these open-ended questions to learn a little bit more about why they selected those answers. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have or take any feedback that you have about this. But we will, we're going to ready to send this out and we're excited to hear from the parents in our community.
I was just curious if there would be a link asking, so they, you know, what school would your child attend if they were enrolled in Granville County Public Schools? I mean, parents, some parents may not even know. Is there going to be like a link where they can figure that out?
We put "not sure" as an option.
I mean, because, yeah, I mean, you might get a lot of them.
I can ask transportation. The maintenance lines are, you know, sometimes a little...
Yeah, I mean, like even if you just pulled up, like, if they could, you know, "I'm not sure," and then like have a link so that they can pull up a map or something so that they could figure it out.
I'll see if that's possible with transportation. That's a great suggestion.
This may be in the open-ended part, but this is something I really do hear.
Yes, ma'am.
That's where my friends go. I hear it all the time. That's where my friends go. My child's friends are there.
And that's not addressed in the survey, would you agree?
Well, people can certainly put that in the open-ended section. Yes, sir. What, is there anything else you'd like to share or?
I don't know that they may promise to do that in mine. Because a lot of people, especially people that are going to schools at first, second to bond, they're not familiar with the school. What they hear is what their neighbors, their friends say. My child knows everybody. Maybe he goes there or there. And they really don't know the answers to these questions. They don't really know about the teachers. They don't really know about course options. And they don't know about school performance. And they just be what they see, somebody that's upset, so. That's just my opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
And with that being said, with regards to what you just said about because my friends and, you know, in the community are going to another one, and that would be the question here with the drag and drop, right? Is that where you see, you know, as far as? And being that the parent is going to be filling this out, I guess they would say, because that's what my child, she wants to go with where her friends are going, a thing of that nature. But it would be great with that drag and drop if there could be, if it doesn't match any of these, like you say, click and drag and drop. Could there be other?
Sure. Can work on that as well.
Yes, thanks.
I was thinking something else, too, that a lot of charter schools have a uniform policy. I'm wondering if that would be another one to add to the drag and drop.
It was, it was not one of the ones that was most frequently cited in those research studies. But if you guys would like me to add that, I would certainly do that.
At the end, we thought about even including a little information about our district. For example, the document used at the state of the school address, which is probably the most up-to-date document with some data points of the district, just having that right at the beginning, which would give an information, general information about the district. What are your thoughts on that? Clear to you?
No, that's yes. Would you like me to also link the choice schools?
I know the survey is anonymous, but is there any thought on capturing any piece of demographic data, like a zip code or Raves or socioeconomics data? Just so that when we disaggregate it, you can really get a real robust picture of?
We have that demographic on the families already.
Okay.
But the survey itself will be anonymous. But we do know the demographic breakdown of the students that we have that are enrolled in charter.
I think in including the information, if we specifically add something about our Granville Early College, that may be of interest to some kids that are maybe in elementary school or into middle school or making decisions. Because that's a wonderful opportunity for many parents to actually save money when their kids go to school with that many credits in their college or associate degree.
Dr. Matt, just a follow-up. Would you like to see some in the future, some information about the demographic breakdown of our students that are enrolled in charters?
And not if we already have them on?
No, I mean, I could just, I recommend I can provide it to you.
Okay.
Just going to actually bring you back a little bit off of what Ms. Williams said because the, I think, a lot of the charter schools end at eighth grade. So having something where they can know that and early college is an option would be really beneficial to you.
Our two largest, our three largest charters that we send them to are all K-plus. I guess some of our charterers are just out of the tree or just our three biggest checks every month.
I'm sure. But still, I mean, there are definitely some of that, although we are going to get some students back when they hit ninth grade.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think this is just an opportunity for people to ask a lot of questions that I've been hearing for the last five, six years. You know, people always want to know why we don't have something that they find someplace else. Just give them an opportunity to ask in a more professional way, I guess, the questions that they might have.
And I think we've always talked about what is it going to take to try to get some of the students back from the charter school. And, you know, this is a great survey, but I believe also what you just said, if there's anything that we could put in this survey that, you know, hits home for us, you know, for them to think, since everybody's going to get this, that, like you said, the early college program, a lot of them might not even, you know, know about some of the great things or things that we're doing to lure, let's say, lure, bring them back. And if we're going to send this, what else can we say to help say, oh, they do have that type of program. Oh, okay, they're doing that. You know, getting...
Thinking.
Even add something to the effect. Are you interested, would you like additional information about this? Who to send the email to?
Well, I'm for, I'm full of negative things. Not negative, with a laugh, you know that. First thing is, by including all of this stuff about the schools, the question is, is that going to impact, number one, whether or not people will fill this out? And number two, whether or not they will feel a sense of bias? I'm just raising that question. There's no answer, but, I mean, we don't know that. But if I got, you know, if I got something like this and they're asking me these questions, and then there's a bunch of stuff about Granville County Public Schools attached to it, I would be a little skeptical. If that could be me, I'd just throw that out. The second, did you say these top three factors, I mean, this list of items that would be a factor in terms of where people are going? Did you see, say, these were the top ones in something?
I read several research studies around school choice, and these were the factors that were most frequently cited. Yes, sir.
Okay, what do we mean by school parent communication?
Well, I think a lot of our, I hear that, I hear that frequently. Of course, I am the one that takes many complaints on the phone. But, you know, a frequent concern that I hear is about lack of communication, whether it be about the individual student or their, or their, you know, just general community student.
What does student engage? What would the average person think the word engagement meant?
Are they actively involved in their life?
Do you think that the average person taking, filling this out would know what that meant?
I think so. I would.
Or neither, I would rather.
What would you guys say would be a better term to use?
And that's why we brought it in the work session seriously. We really do want your feedback on this.
Student engagement, when you're observing a teacher's classroom is one thing, but the parent's not doing that, so I don't know.
Well, I mean, as you said, it's always the perception, right? So a parent has not likely been in the building and may not know, but it's the perception of what they have heard about the school.
Is there a way in Walltricks that a person could maybe hover over, get some type of explanation without being, without biasing them? But just a definition or an example of what student engagement is?
Sure, I can work on that.
That's a good, that's a very good idea. Like, what does child's well-being mean? Is that mental? Is that, you know, physical? Is that academic? And the parent may be coming from any area or any, you know, background part about this that we wouldn't even consider. So I like your idea of having this little...
Little hook.
Would be really good. How about, I know you can't, but if you want for a reason, how about the spiritual side? That people are keeping their kids out of school or sending them somewhere where that's more spiritual.
Would you like me to add that?
I mean, that, we'd love to, I'd love to know the kind of numbers.
Well, some of our homeschool operators can choose to list that they are open to homeschool for religious reasons, but we don't necessarily have that for charter school families. But some of our homeschools are designated as religious houses.
Spirit religious reasons.
That's a better word.
The other thoughts? These are good.
We'll take these back and we'll take another stab at it. If you continue to think about it, feel free to forward your ideas to Mrs. Curtis.
Thank you all very much, Lucy.
So with that, we're going to move on now to the exceptional children's programs.
Good afternoon, Dr. Warren. Good afternoon, board members. My face might look familiar to some of you many moons ago, four mini moons. And I decided that I couldn't stay away, so I'm back to do a little more EC services. But I am really happy to be here. It's, it's been invigorating, let's put it that way.
And we're happy to have you.
Thank you. So Dr. Winborn asked me to just do a little EC 101 PowerPoint. It's very brief. So there's, of course, the process of getting identified for, to be a part of the EC program or identified as a student with disability rolls through this triangle here. And most of our students are instructed through core instruction, and they don't need anything else. And then we have the students in the middle, you've probably seen this model multiple times, who need some targeted instruction, and that solves whatever learning problems or needs that they have. And then there's those few students way at the top who need a lot of intense interventions. And that, that's usually where our students come from. There is three distinct problems for when you're identifying a student. They have to meet these criteria. So we have 14 areas of identification, and they have to meet at least one or more of those. The disability must have an adverse effect on the student's educational performance, meaning they might be a student that has some attention issues, but it's not really showing that it's adversely affecting their education. So that student may just get more interventions and not be identified. And then the last one, of course, is that they require specially designed instruction, and that's that big document that I need that talks all about the student, their strengths, their areas of need, and then what the school is going to do to kind of supplement their instruction with EC services. Stan, can you skip one more? Because I think that, okay, I have one. I mean, go back, yeah, one. Yeah, this, this one. So these are the 14 areas, just to review. All of these areas can be, you can have one or more of these areas. You can have speech, language, that is always, not always, is most of the time a supplement to one of these main areas. And then you can go back to that. And then these are all of the related services and specialized evaluations and screenings that have to be done. So there's a long, intense process for making sure that we have looked at all of the needs of an individual student before they're placed in our program. A lot of these evaluations or screenings are required if you're looking at a particular, say, you're looking at a student with autism. Then there's a whole host of things over here that you have to do to add to that, to decide whether that child actually places in that area. So as you can see, it's a, it's a big process. It takes a lot of people to get this done. So our, we have multiple state and federal funding sources, but our largest amount comes from state aid. And that's for our students who are ages five to 21. And that is based on 12.75% of our students. So let me get Stan. Yes. So this is taken from our December head count. We just actually on Friday finalized our April 1 head count, so our total is up to 1055. But in December, we had 1049. And as you can see, this is just a breakdown of how our students kind of get a slice of the pie. of how our students kind of get a slice of the pie. The majority of our students are students with learning disabilities. And then you'll see a lot of kids that are speech, language impaired. That's pretty typical in preschool ages and for students who have more severe disabilities. Autism is, is pretty high. That doesn't necessarily mean that a student has to be in a separate class. It just means that they have the characteristics related to kids with autism. So, there's a very wide span for services for students with autism. They can be mostly in regular class all day with just some support, or they could be in self-contained classes. Moving on.
Question.
You have a question?
Um, the 1055.
That was for the April 1 child count.
Is that includes?
Three and four-year-olds as well. Yes, yes, that includes for school kids.
Does the 12.75% apply to that group or just the five?
No, but it was such a small number, it really doesn't change the numbers very much. So, you'll see on my next slide. So, we went all the way back to child count for December 2013. And you'll see our numbers here. We've gone from 900 all the way up to where we are today at 1055. And then I did this chart so that we could look at the next chart, which is our ADM. So, of course, the ADM has dropped over the years, I guess mostly due to school choice. And you'll see that our EC numbers have dropped as well. But as ADM drops and our EC numbers drop, our percentage of kids are still kind of there. So, it's, we're still around 14, 50%. I want to say when I was here, a long, long time ago, can't even remember how many years, 13 years, I think, we were right around 16% of our students were students with disabilities. So, the ADM does play into that just a little bit as far as our funding goes. If you recall, I said we were funded, that's our main source of funding. Now, we have other funding, lots of other funding, little pockets here and there, but we are at 15%. So, that's, you know, a few percent over that students that we're serving that we're not actually getting state funding for, based on this.
So, if a charter school, for instance, is serving elementary children, has, say, 25, 30 speech impaired kids and maybe two or three other kids, they're well under the 12.75%. They may be 7 to 9%. So, they're getting full funding for each of those children.
They get funding exactly the same way we do. But it's the same thing here. So, if we have a student who gets speech services, and then we have a student who, let's say, has multiple disabilities, they need nursing services, speech services, PT services, PT services, we still get the same amount of money. So, there's no difference. That funding has always been a little, little difficult due to that. But they have added, like I said, there's other little pots of money that you can apply for for students who have high needs, students who are in group homes in the area, so on and so forth. But yes, they, they do get the same amount of funding that we do. Stan, if you'll, go.
Before you go forward, please, go back to what's, I'm not sure that I understand, Glenda, what, what you asked.
Okay. What's the figure you get from the state, like, you know?
I want to say $2,700 per student.
So, you're getting $2,700 if you have, say, 30 students in a school? And it's, say, 7%, 8% of your ADM, your charter school or any school for that matter, you're getting that full $2,700 per child. But if you're over that 12.75%, you've got to look at your numbers and start dividing them out, and you're not getting $2,700 per child. You're getting less than.
Well, you're not being funded for the students who are over that 12.75 cap. And all students get the same amount of money. So, there's a couple of percentage points that we are not funded for because we're over that, that funding cap of 12.75.
But is that not true pretty much for about half the systems in the state rule systems? That's what I've always read, that it's. I think it's pretty common in the.
I, I think it is. But, you know, as I was showing, we really haven't, our numbers have not changed, but our ADM has changed. So, all along, we've been serving whatever kids we need to serve.
So, so, please, I'm, so, if we get, you say 12.75, an average of $2,700 per student.
I'm sorry, the 12.75 is a cap. So, we can get $2,700 per student up to 12.75% of our population, our ADM.
And then?
And then after that.
Zero.
We're, we're not funded through the state for those students.
So, we'd have to get locally, local funds to pay for that. I mean, county funds.
And like I said, there's a lot of little funding pots that all meld in together with it.
Do those, do those little funding pot, plots here and there cover our needs?
I, I think so.
We make it for, you know, we have to find it somewhere to take care of those children.
The bottom line is that we have to serve all the students.
Best way.
And if it goes over this percentage 12.75, we still have to do it.
Still have to do it, right. So, and we're, and the state recognizes that, and we're trying to do a better job of. So, as you saw in my pie chart, we serve a lot of kids that have learning disabilities. And they, the state has now put in some more requirements that the whole MTSS process, the regular ed has to be part of that observation process of those students to make sure that everything, all of their instruction is to fidelity when they're getting those interventions in the MTSS process before they make it to EC. So, that's another way to make sure kids actually have a disability and that the intense interventions are actually being done to fidelity to make sure that we're not just placing students who need some intense interventions and can get them another way. We're not putting labels on them.
Another quick question. Can we go back one more? So, I kind of noticed that in one school year, right, from December 2013, April 2014, that's the same school year, every single time that that happens, our numbers in EC children go up? Is that?
In the springtime, yes, that's typical.
And so, is there, what is the reason for that? And then my other question is, is that because we're getting kids back from charter schools? And now those numbers have already been?
I think it's mostly because the MTSS process usually starts in the fall when they start seeing students struggling, and they try to provide interventions. And at the point, usually around January, February, they're starting to figure out they're floundering pretty significantly. That's when they get referred, yeah.
And then you've got the ones going out to start the next year, the seniors.
And then with homeschool, we do have kids that come back from homeschool and from charter schools sometimes. But I'm, I'm not sure about Brown County because I have not been part of it.
And when something like that happens, it's usually after the 20-day market. Is this similar to like our regular year where it's, you know, that's not reported basically, you know, but nonetheless?
Yes, it's the same process.
Honey, will you explain MTSS? What MTSS is, some of our board members.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's multi-tiered system of support. That makes it better. So. This part is.
Yeah, there we go.
He's going to thank you, right?
Very much, that is very clear.
Education is lots of acronyms. So, it's a, it's a tiered system of providing support. You assess the child, you provide more support. You assess the child, and they keep moving up. If they do well with the supports, then they can move down or they can move out. But if they keep moving up the ladder, that's when they kind of move into the referral process to see if they, you know, meet these three prongs for EC identification.
That's the best way to put it. It's another triangle for the majority of the children.
Multi-tier.
Yeah.
Or the lower, and if it's.
I mean, that's about 80% of your kids. And then, you know, really, that top number should be between 3 and 5% of our students. And it's not. It's a lot. So, but, you know, I don't know if that's because of COVID. I, I don't know, because I just haven't been here in the process.
Molly, if I may, on Dr. McLean, the question about, do we have enough money to, to serve all these children? And I think the answer to that question is no. There have been years past when this department has struggled, and it has been in the red, so to speak.
That was after my time, I just like. There was a lot of money, but I don't know.
Well, and I mean, to that point, the, the leadership in this department and the, and the team, the EC team, they actually have some influence over this. The way that they plan and they deliver services to children, how efficient they are, where they, you know, assign students for those self-contained classes, what the schedules look like for the teachers, you know. There, there are things within our director's control to make the money be spent more efficiently.
And that's not always popular. You know, because it, it looks like there needs to be more teachers than you can really afford. Because we'd all like to have smaller numbers. But, you know, the state sets certain number of students who can be in a class depending on their needs. Teacher has to match the certification, or they have to have a certification match to teach those kids. It's, it's a big process. And also with MTSS, you have, I'm not sure who's running them here. Is it counselors, maybe, who is in charge of MTSS?
Partially.
Partially counselors. I don't know if you all have had the same turnover as most districts, but the training is intense to keep people on their toes about who really should be, you know, at that top tier of instruction and interventions for EC referral. And if you don't get, you know, if you're a person who just came in and you see a kid struggling, well, of course, you know, you want to get them what you think they need. So, that training piece is huge for everybody. Principals, counselors, whoever's, you know, doing MTSS. And then if you've had a lot of turnover, that's, that can become a big issue.
This is just maybe a tad off base, but it occurred to me when I was reading this information today. Our children, our teachers that are serving kids and resource and that type of thing, are they being required in the science, reading, science, learning to do this as well? Are all EC teachers or just some?
On the elementary level.
Oh, letters training?
Letters.
The science of reading?
On the elementary level.
She's thinking about the paperwork already.
I know.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
So, in the last slide, I think it's not, it's, yeah. So, this is probably not exact, but it's close. We kind of pulled out the separate EC class teachers. These are the teachers who teach kids with multiple disabilities, kids with, who are intellectually delayed. Some students with autism, some students who have multiple, multiple issues, maybe have visual impairments or are blind, have a hearing impairment. They require, like I said earlier, a lot of staff. And so, we just kind of pulled that out. We have, we pay for some personal nursing services. We have some personal assistants, someone who has to stay with a student who might have seizures or otherwise need someone to, you know, be, have eyes on them constantly. And this was a breakdown of our total funding, how our money was spent pretty much when we're talking about students. So, about 38% of it goes to those students who need intense instruction.
So, go back to money. So, the, we get $2,700 per student for each of the students.
Don't quote me on the 27.
I'm, I'm, yeah, I understand, yeah.
I really can't remember, but I think that's close.
Does that include the federal?
No, that is just the state funding that has the cap.
So, we have, but we, we get 27, number one question. We get $2,700 no matter which, which.
That's correct.
Part of this, okay.
That is correct.
So, let's say we have students who are multiply handicapped, they're kids who don't even speak or, you know, don't read or write or whatever. So, those school, those kids obviously need more.
That's correct.
So, where does the more money come from? You said pots and so on and so.
So, we get federal funding, and it's, the funding sources are so convoluted. I, you know, I don't know, maybe you can, you can explain it better. There's a lot of, like, back in 1982, however many kids you had in this program, I mean, it seriously is like that. It's, they're very convoluted. There are for students who need, say, they need a nurse. I can apply for special money for that kid. But there's a lot, I don't know if Brown County's getting that because I, I really don't know what's been applied for and just haven't been here long enough to look into that. But there's lots of little pots of money here and there that you can apply for. It still doesn't make up for the, you know, it's not going to make up for the.
Roughly make up for the difference. And I, how much would that be roughly?
I can't tell you.
Okay.
I don't want to say something that's not right because there's no, like, we don't tick off which kids are counted in the 12.75%. It's just that that's what the state sees, that we have this many kids and give us that much money. And then after that, we're not getting it.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
My name's Mara Hake, I'm sitting in for Eva. So, Eva doesn't all of a sudden look different. I'm her colleague. One thing I would just note is that although students who require separate instruction in the EC classroom might have multiple disabilities, the fact that a child is eligible in an area of multiple disabilities does not necessarily mean that that child is more costly from the perspective of funding that child's rights.
Right.
Similarly, a child might be eligible in the area of autism, right? But might be really largely receiving all services alongside non-disabled peers during the school day, requires some accommodations, some small amounts of specially designed instruction. So, I just wanted to clarify that. That sometimes I think something folks think is that, well, if you have more than one disability or if you have a certain disability label, then you must require more services. You must require a certain sort of placement during the school day. And, and instead, school districts or the IDVA have to be governed by the unique needs of the child, right? And that's really the north star for what the kid requires.
That there are kids, we said it, not necessarily, but there are kids who do need that.
There are kids that have many more severe needs that might require more specially designed instruction and might need it to be provided in that special education classroom as opposed to the general education classroom. And then some students who require nursing services or some other services.
I think the takeaway from this is that our separate setting classes require a teacher, in most cases, a teacher assistant. And it's a very small number because of their needs. It doesn't mean that they need a whole lot of other things, but they can need occupational therapy, physical therapies, speech, language. We have lots of kids that can be like LD and still need speech therapy. So, it is very dependent on, on the student. But this just kind of gives you an idea of the classes that we run where we have students who are being instructed in that really small environment. And we have multiple staff members who are working with those kids just because of their intense needs.
I was looking at last April's numbers and in looking at the intellectual disability severe. We didn't show any, but we do have in the multiple disabilities, we've had 12. So, I'm assuming that that's where our, what used to be called severe profoundance, a lot of that will be some of those kids.
Can you go back to the areas of the education? So, they changed that a while back. So, you have intellectual disabilities mild. Some of those kids could be in regular classes, some services. Then there's the moderate and severe kids. And those are the kids that would probably, most likely, be in a classroom with a couple of, you know, with a teacher and a teacher assistant and that sort of thing. Does that answer your question?
No.
So, don't let the labels, the labels kind of fool you. These are, I, when I say multiple disabilities, a student could be LD and have a visual impairment, and they were possibly qualified under that area. But we do have some kids that have more extensive needs. It's a hodgepodge.
My final question, I promise. We have to take every child that comes to law, right? Can a charter school decide not to take a student with, with needs and send them back to tell them that we can't serve you and you need to go back to the traditional schools? Can they do that?
I've been told it depends on their charter. If their charter says that they're preparing students to go to college and the student is, let's say, in a curriculum that's not heading in that direction, then most of the times it's the parents that just don't want to go.
What if they're told that repeatedly?
I don't know. I mean, they could be told many things.
I've got some information off the website I'll share with you off the end of the meeting. But basically, I just looked at how many we've had in different disabilities. I'm just going to give you one example right now. We, this, I'm so glad you're here today and presenting this because, okay, it sounds like maybe it's not that many kids, but if you think about it, you're talking about, if you line up ten kids randomly, you're talking about one and a half of those kids have a disability. And whether it's mild, moderate, or whatever, they still, we still serve them. But I'll just give you one example. State of North Carolina, on the two thousand twenty-one April report, intellectual disability mild, and I know we serve a lot of those within their class and maybe with resource help, Granville County Public Schools has a hundred and fifteen that they serve. The charters in the state are listed on that report. Two different schools serve that category. Number twenty-six served ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-one. So public schools do serve all kids. And again, like I say, the charter may be that way too. But in trying to figure out what some of these disabilities are now, some of the disabilities they leave blank and the numbers don't even add up, so it's not real transparent to me. I couldn't figure it out.
There is a process by which the state monitors all schools and determines whether what they see at your school looks disproportionate in the number of students with race disabilities, those kind of things. And so that is reported every year, number of suspensions by race and disability category, there's a whole host of, and, and all schools are included in them.
In our testing program, E O J U S, would you say that most all of our learning disability children and our intellectually disability mild students are included as part of the testing program?
Yeah, I'd say most, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty sure most of the L D students are. Probably some of the intellectual disability, the rest of those students would be on a different curriculum. But they, they're on what's called extended content standards and those students are tested. Just, it's just, it's a different, different test. It's more hands-on kind of approach.
I think that was the last question.
I, I think the word that comes to mind from this morning, I think, when it comes to funding E C and the district as a whole, the word that we talked about this morning was, was it? And I, you know, we find a way.
Sure do.
That looks good on Brett.
Madam Chairman, Dr. McLean, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Hester. She has been a godsend in, in holding down the fort and doing an exceptional job. Coming out of retirement, and she's only able to work a limited number of hours each week, and so I just want to thank her for her leadership and, and the teamwork. They have a fantastic team over there.
They really do, and they've been holding it together.
Small group, but a really hardworking group. So thank you.
So that takes us into our finance portion. And I'd like to raise a few questions. This is Mike and Mr. Gilf Lamb, just going to give you an update. We've already shared the majority of districting. They're going to give you an official update because we received official word from the Department of Public Instruction.
Hi, thank you, Dr. McLean. A word of glad to be with you. As Dr. McLean said, we have received official word that the grant was approved. So glad to tell you that we have already started to obtain quotes for some of the work specifically for new bleachers. We had new bleachers identified for Granville Central, South Granville High School, bleacher repair in Webb. And so that work has already begun. Additionally, at South Granville, we have work at the track to renovate the high jump and the long jump areas. At the middle schools, we're looking at repairing softball field fencing at Butler Gym. And so we've already gotten in touch with there's some fencing there. At Board of Granville, we're going to provide a concession stand and that's going to be wired up for them so they can be on set to go. So we've already started some of this process and some of the new seats for the bleachers inside the gym at, we have a simple one included in this as well. So we're really pleased that the grant, we got it and we've started that process. I'll continue to give updates as the work is completed.
Just wanted to remind you that this grant was worth one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. It wasn't a heck of a lot of money, but it was certainly far more than we had before. So we were appreciative. And if you recall, we wanted to spread the love to all campuses secondary, so our middle schools and our high schools. What we did learn over this spring break was that whatever it was we submitted is all we are able to do. We can't go in and change anything to say, oops, we want to change our minds now and do something different. So what we submitted is what has been approved and what we're able to do. There should be adjustments at Holly. What is it, where to do at Holly?
We did not have them included in the original grant, but we can make adjustments to do.
So nothing for Holly?
No.
Oh, because we were waiting.
We were waiting.
That's right. And the hope is that you're hearing something this evening.
The Granville Recreation Parks and Greenways Committee approved recommendation. I don't know what the commissioners will do, but there is small pot of money for Holly and for South Granville for on the field, so.
That's great news. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So now we are on to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget update.
I would like to introduce the Hill Group. We have with us this evening, Mr. Penner, Mr. Loeb. They will be sharing with us budget recommendations for our consideration this evening as we work through what is we would like to do for this year's budget. You have information already. We came strongly from what has been done and want to think about what is we'd like to do as we look through the recommendations that need to go to county commissioners. Remember the date by which we need to get our information to commissioners will be May fifteenth. That is in statute. May fifteenth is the date. So we put another date on the calendar for a work session. These gentlemen are available virtually, of course, if needed, and this might not be needed, but while they were here, we wanted to get on their calendars. So we have a date of May twelfth for a two P M, is that like two P M work session? Just in case it is needed. So if you'll place a hold on May twelfth at two P M, and that's just in case it's needed. If we are able to work through tonight's work and get things solidified at our regularly scheduled board meeting, which is next Monday, then we won't meet the date on May twelfth. But just in case we need a date, we wanted to go ahead and get on everyone's calendar. So with that being said, I'm happy to turn everything over to the board.
Good evening or afternoon, yes. Thank you for having us again. We've been able to go, communicate several times up to this point, and it's been in generalities, our discussions before, there hasn't been specific numbers associated with our discussion. So today we want to go over some specific numbers as far as, as far as it relates to your budget. The finance officer part, I mean, wants to make one comment about E C funding. The reason why you don't have enough money is because the feds mandated E C education, but they didn't fund it at the percentage they said they were going to when it first started. So that's the big reason why you don't have enough E C money. So that being said, I just had to get that out of, I apologize.
And I wanted to add, I'm glad we had some discussion earlier about spirituality because we mainly sound.
We're going to have it in our system, so now we're ready. So if you'll look at the agenda for our presentation, first thing we're going to talk about is the current year budget summary, and we'll just go straight to that. I only want to mention one thing on the budget summary. You'll notice that it says the state percentage of funding is forty-five percent. What's throwing that off is the fact that there's so much federal funding now from, from COVID that is distorting the normal numbers. So once we get out of this three-year cycle of getting the, the big, what we call ESTRA grants, you'll see that number going back up into the sixties. Back in the day, it was actually in the seventies. That number has gone down, but you'll see that number going back into the sixties probably beginning about the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And so the federal percentage will go down. It's usually around ten percent on average, and now it's about twenty-five percent. So you'll see some, some differences there. But I just want to bring that to your attention, that the last year and the next couple of years are going to be a little bit different as far as source of funding. And it also changes the way that you can spend your money because the federal funds expire. And so you have to be careful not to use it for ongoing expenses because once the grant runs out, you have to find a funding source or cut that position or other positions that may be paid out of those funds. Next, please. So as far as the capital outlay revenue. Okay, we read it off there. Okay. The, by law, the, the counties are required to give you what we call a half-cent sales tax, a portion of half-cent sales tax for capital outlay. And so generally across all hundred and fifteen school systems, that is what is budgeted for the schools. There's all, they're also required to give you an amount out of the lottery. We don't have time to talk about it today, but you're probably getting less from the lottery than you did from the old, what we call public school building fund. So we could talk about lottery funds and what it does and doesn't do, but that's, that's for another day. But, so the things that they're required to give you are from the half-cent sales tax and from the lottery funds. And of course, the counties can give you additional monies to help with debt service or for special projects they want to fund. Of course, they're, they could do that, but they're required to give you a certain percentage of the half-cent sales tax and the, and the lottery funds. And the capital funds can be used for anything from equipment up to buildings. And so some folks will use it to do replacement cycles for technology, they use it for vehicles, others will just use it for buildings. But you do have the option of using it for anything from, from furniture, technology and so forth, all the way up to, to buildings. The, okay, our funding, our, those are our revenues actually by fund. State and federal, in some of the usual North Carolina, how much of our, our funds come from outside of local? When you go to other states, you have more local funding, but you also have less federal overs, less state oversight. It's one of the issues you have in North Carolina is because you do get so much state funding, you have a lot of reports, a lot of things that have to be done for the state. And so there's a lot more state oversight in North Carolina than what you'll see in other sites, but that also correlates with the amount of, amount of funding that we're getting. If you look at the very bottom of the graph there, the, the little block, seventy-eight percent of the money in Granville County is used for instructional services. Once again, that number may go up a little bit once the COVID is done, but you buy a lot of supplies, building items now with COVID money, with ESTRA money, that percentage could possibly go up a little bit later, but seventy-eight percent of your operating funds are used for instructional services. The issue, the four million dollar in transfers is really is what's hurting the school system right now, the dollars that are going to the charter schools. And so when the state does their, their budget, of course, they give a state budget to the charter schools, but locally, you're required to give a proportionate share of whatever you receive locally to the charter schools. And like, as we mentioned before in our previous meetings, there are some things that are not determined on a per-student basis, but the money is being given back on a per-student basis, but school maintenance, insurance policies, things of that nature are pretty much given, and if you lose a few students per school, you still have to have the same number of teachers in that particular school. And so unless you have a huge drop at a particular school location as far as the number of students, the money that you're giving to the charter schools is hurting you disproportionately because it is done on a per-student basis. And this is very informal, so if you have any questions as we go along, please just interrupt and please just give us your comments. Seventy percent of your budget is spent on salaries and benefits, and I want to break that down a little bit. At the state level, about ninety to ninety-five percent of the state budget is salary and benefits. And the reason why I want to mention that, we're going to talk about some state issues in just a minute, so I want to, I want you to realize that about ninety to ninety-five percent of the state-funded budget is for salaries and benefits. The local side is a lower percentage because you're paying for things that, that are not salaries and benefits, like insurance, stipends, they're not considered salaries, but there's a lot of things that are paid for locally that are not supplies and materials. The, in the state side, one of the things that's paid for that is a large amount of the budget or a large amount of a particular budget is gas and oil for your school buses. But outside of that, your instructional supply budget has gone way down. If you were, if you were doing analysis of the dollars that the state sets aside for instructional supplies and materials, it's a lot less than it was ten, twelve, fifteen years ago. So just about all your state budget is going for salaries and benefits. Locally, it's probably closer to the sixty to seventy percent. And once again, one of the things that's distorting the total of salaries and benefits is the COVID money, because a lot of that is not used for salaries and benefits, it's being used for, for materials and supplies, so that's reducing the percentage of money, of total money that's going to salaries and benefits. So once again, you'll see that number increase in the future. By source, we talked about that just a little bit, but look at the COVID funds, twenty percent. So that's a, that's a infusion over a three-year period of funds that you won't see again. We hope, we won't have another COVID-related type thing that requires that kind of money. But anyway, that, that twenty percent will expire in September of twenty-four. So between now and then, you'll have to make some decisions, and I guess now is a good time, is any to talk about that. In Granville, as well as in a lot of other districts, there are positions, there are salaries that are being paid out of these COVID funds. And so at some point, you, as a school system, you have to decide when are you going to quit paying for those positions? Because at the end of the grant period, once again, you're either going to have to pay for those with local and state funds, or you have to drop the positions. And so I think there needs to be a, some type of plan in place as to how you're going to handle those positions over a period of time. It's easier to, to drop five or ten positions a year as opposed to thirty at one time. And so since those federal funds are not sustainable, we know in September twenty-four, they're going to go away, at some point, you may have to decide how you want to handle those positions that are currently being paid out of, out of COVID funds. Is there any questions on that? Is the logic behind that?
Do you know how many positions are being carried over?
There are, I know you're carrying forward now almost a million dollars worth of salaries for things that were held harmless, and was that, I can't really exact break down, was that fourteen positions or was it more than that?
Fourteen sounds right.
Fourteen, about fourteen positions, and that, that was part of a hold harmless that carried over from last year, I believe. And there are probably some, that was just the hold harmless, there was probably some other positions that may be paid out of that continuously. I don't have that in front of me, but cumulatively, it's a pretty significant amount. And when we add some other numbers, we're going to look at in just a minute, that's why the sense of urgency I want to bring to your attention, as to when you may want to start addressing it fairly soon. Any questions on this page, on this graph? Okay? Well, it's been a few minutes on this, and you have to bear with me, there's a lot of numbers here, but one of the questions that comes up when we work with school districts is how much of the financial issues are COVID issues and how much are true enrollment decrease issues? And so what we have to remember is over the last two years, the state has, has held harmless for, for the most part. They didn't hold harmless if students went to the charter school, they did reduce you for that, but for the most part, they've held you harmless on your allotted A D M for funding purposes. And so if you look at the chart here, the allotted A D M before COVID was seventy-seven hundred students. As recently as this year, they were still funding you at seventy-two hundred students. Okay, you don't have seventy-two hundred students, okay? So for the last two years, you've been able to, to ride the wave, so to speak, they've said, you know what, we're not going to penalize you for COVID. But look at next year, they're going to fund you at six thousand seven hundred and eighty-three students. That's about a six percent decrease. If you look at a fifty million dollar, fifty-plus million dollar state budget, you're looking at over three million dollars that are being cut. Basically, what they're saying is we're going to get you back to where you should have been. The last couple of years, we understand we've had some, some unusual circumstances and we've held you harmless, but unless there's legislation that continues to hold you harmless, which anything can happen, but it's not on the books right now, you're going to have a six percent reduction in your state funds. percent reduction in your state funds. So remember, we talked about the people that were funded out of COVID. In a minute, we're going to talk about those allotments that are going to decrease as a result of this six percent change in ADM. So if we look at our enrollment versus the charter school, this is another issue. If you go, look back in two thousand nineteen, there was only fourteen hundred students that were in charter schools. Go all the way to twenty-three, and we just made an estimate for the twenty-three proposed. It could be a lot more than that or it could be less. We just took the trend of the last couple of years, the percentage trend. And so you're going to be close to nineteen hundred charter school students in the upcoming year versus fourteen hundred just three years ago. So every time a charter school student enrolls in a charter school, you're having to pay that much more money out of your local budget to cover them. And one thing, each district's different. Once again, I don't know how much transition you have here, but after the second month, if those kids come back from the charter school, the state's not going to give you any money for those kids for that particular year. They look at what they call the best one of two. So after the second enrollment day, after the second enrollment month, the fortieth day, the state adjusts your allotments. So anything that happens after that, you're having to pay that out of your own pocket. And so if you did, for some reason, you didn't have a lot of charter school kids that came back after the second month, you would be absorbing those costs with all funds, federal, state, and local, without getting additional money to cover those.
Okay, that's a good question.
Yes, sir.
Because this has been one of those things that I don't think has been clear to the public. Basically, what we see over the years is a student enrollment possibility, students who are eligible to receive support from the Granville County. And so that number basically has stayed pretty close to eight thousand a year, correct? So that when we go to the commissioners and talk about X need for salaries and so on and so forth, the reality is we're not just talking about our sixty-seven hundred, but we're talking really about eight thousand kids. And there's a misnomer there that the, you know, the commissioners say, why are you wanting more money when blah, blah, blah? And the reality is the whole county is affected, I mean, in terms of schools. The second, is that, that is accurate?
Yes.
All right, the second thing is the number of students going to charters and the number of students that we have to send money to is around, what, thirty-five?
I think it's thirty-five charter students this year that you're writing checks to.
And the public generally thinks that these kids are going to Vance Charter, Feudahenderson Collegiate, and Falls Lake, and Oxford Prep. But the reality is there are a number of students who now, because of the law, are getting this money, whether they go to school at El, something like El Cinco de Whatever in Meban or somewhere, and you, ones we don't even know what they are or what they do. Part of that is, that part of that issue in terms of going to, that money going out is that this had not been done before this whole charter thing came into place. And I don't know that we are, we don't seem to be reflecting the thirty-seven schools or thirty-five charters, and it's not just three. And those, many of those kids going to the other ones have never even been in the school system. So it's not about leaving charter, here to go to charters in many cases, they've never been here.
And when they expanded the number of charter schools, there's more across the state. And so even from where I come from, we had, we used to pay for charter schools up in the mountains, you know, which was, you know, a five, six-hour drive, but they were enrolled in a special charter school up in the mountains, and we were having to write a check to them. So the fact that they're allowed to go to any charter school further expands the possibility of them going, having, going to schools outside of Granville County. Of course, you're surrounded by districts that have a lot of charter schools.
Oh, yeah.
And so they're not, from a driving standpoint, they're not that far away, and so they don't think that much about driving across the county line, so to speak, to go to another charter school. I thought it was something that rose.
Related to that, last thing. So how many students, our enrollment, I know up here in the northern part of the county has been reduced, the population is declining from roughly Oxford North. That's no secret. It would be interesting to know how many students are being lost each year in terms of population decline. In other words, if you had a hundred kids going to our schools in the northern part of the county, and just by population decline, it's down to seventy, the question would be, where do those kids factor into the total numbers? And it may not be a big deal, but we'd be curious to know what that number is.
Yeah, because the total students, you see very little change of any between two thousand and nineteen and now, it's just where they're going. And so the other thing too with charter schools, you know, if you lose thirty students this year, those thirty students are spread out among twelve, fourteen schools or whatever. So you're seeing no change whatsoever in your operational cost because you still have the same number of teachers, the same number of TAs, but you're losing that number of students times your local appropriation because of the way the formula is done. And so little by little, it's eating away at what you're able to spend money on, but you're not seeing any reduction in your, in your costs.
We talked about that last time in our presentation about variable costs and fixed costs associated with each student. We talked about that quite at length. But one thing, your earlier discussion about an EC student that goes to a charter school, and basically, if they, the administration talks to the parent and says, we're unable to serve your student based on his needs, well, what do they do? They're coming right back to you, and if they've missed those first two months, you don't get any funding for them. So that's kind of a quirk in the formula that's been there for many, many years, you know, based on the IEP of the student, is charter able to serve them? And in many cases, they're not.
You have a high percentage, we mentioned this before too, you do have a high percentage of kids going to charter schools in proportion to other school districts. So you've got about twenty-five percent or so going to charter schools in this county. Now, you have some others up in the Northeast that are a little bit higher, but for the most part, that's your percentage of kids in charter schools is a little bit high. And even statewide, the K-12 and public schools is going down, but overall, the charter schools are going up. But your percentage is a little bit higher than what we used to see.
You're going to see that evolve into some of the numbers we're going to be talking about soon too.
Okay. Any more questions on the enrollment? So now let's talk about the budget a little bit, probably give you some overview stuff. And let's look at what the state budget's going to look like. We mentioned you're going to see a six percent cut, that's roughly three million dollars. And so what does that mean from a formula standpoint, from a position standpoint? Well, you're going to lose roughly eleven and a half teaching positions. Okay? We'd have to go break it down grade by grade and look at each individual type of school, but just, it's going to be pretty close, it may be eleven, it may be twelve, it's going to be close to eleven and a half teaching positions. Remember, we already talked about the COVID positions that are an issue, so you've got to add these two though. And one thing I want to mention before we get too far in that, the state doesn't look at the number of schools you're operating. They look at the number of students by grade level. So whether it's Granville or whether it's Cumberland, where I'm from, they say, how many kindergarten students do you have, X? Here's the formula, here's how many you get, first grade formula, second grade formula. So it's a local decision as to how many schools you have that require that number of teachers. And rightly or wrongly, the smaller the school, the more expensive it is to run because you've got to meet those class sizes. And so you may have, let's say if you have twenty-five kindergarten students, well, you can't have, you can't say, oh, I just put one teacher in there. The state says you've got to have two. Well, if I've got six hundred students in a school or seven hundred, there's a good chance I can get pretty close to that without having to have that extra position. The state's only giving me one teacher, don't have to put two into this one. So that's something to take into consideration as you look at your budgets in the future, is as your ADM is declining, that means you must have some schools, I'm not as familiar with, obviously, with your school situation, but the, you have, some schools are probably taking a bigger hit than others. And as those schools become smaller, it's costing you more to run those schools because of the way that the state does the logic formulas. So that being said, those eleven and a half teachers are going to be spread among different schools, but if you have half your schools that aren't seeing an ADM reduction, they're not going to lose teachers. But if you have the other half that are, they're going to absorb those eleven and a half positions. When Mr. Perry does his allocations for the school, he'll have to base it on a projection for which schools we think are going to lose those students. But some could have a disproportionate share of that eleven and a half positions. Enhancement teachers, the state set up a new category this year for art, music, and roughly, pretty much art, music, and P E, but any enhancement for elementary school, you'll lose one of those, so that's twelve and a half teaching positions. Assistant principals, you get one ten-month position for about every nine hundred students. Do you have any schools with nine hundred or more students? Do you have assistant principals? Right? So that means you're paying for a disproportionate number of assistant principals, probably with local funds. That's like that in all one hundred and fifteen districts, it's not just Granville. The state has not sufficiently funded assistant principals for as long as I can remember. It did used to be one to seven hundred students, by the way, but now it's one to nine hundred. So just to get one full-time position, you have to have nine hundred students. So that means you get roughly seven to eight positions from the state. I don't know how many you actually employ, but there's seven to eight that the state pays for, the rest of them are coming out of your local money. Instructional support, that's another one that has never been funded correctly. That's your guidance counselors, your social workers, your nurses, your media specialists. You get one for about every two hundred and thirty students. So that means if you have a school with four hundred and sixty students, you get to pick which two positions you want out of all those different types of positions. But you're going to lose one and a half of those next year based on your ADM reduction. CTE teachers. At the high school, that helps make up for the high class size number that they give us when they allocate high school teachers. It's about one, the state gives us one regular high school teacher for about every twenty-nine, twenty-nine and a half students. Well, over and above that, you get a CTE allotment. And so that CTE allotment's going to go down by half a teacher, which won't have a tremendous effect, but you are going to lose, these are all certified positions. So these are sixteen and a half positions that have direct contact with kids on a daily basis. So you add that to the ones we already talked about on the federal level, and we'll talk about some options possibly as to how some of this can be absorbed. But at some point, like I said, September twenty-four, when that federal money goes away, the options are going to be very limited. Now, that's just those that are allotted by position. How about those that are allotted by dollars? Okay? Like low wealth, like your disadvantaged student fund, like your non-instructional personnel, which is your clerks and your custodians. They're going to reduce by six percent also. So that could be another seventeen positions, they're not certified, some of them could be, the seventeen just depends on which program is taking the six percent or so cut. But you could lose another seventeen positions. So just in that one page, you're looking at possibly thirty-three positions that could be cut or could be lost in addition to those that were in the COVID funds. And the reason why I keep emphasizing the COVID funds, theoretically, you can cash flow what the potential cuts are, but you can't cash flow them forever because the federal money's going to run out. So that's why I said there may need to be a plan in place as to handle, how you handle the reductions over a period of the next two, three years as opposed to wait until the end of the third year and have it matter. Any questions? So now let's talk about salaries. This is really going to be the biggest portion of whatever budget increases you're going to be looking at. The state's mandated the fifteen-dollar-an-hour increase, but also on the other employees that are already making fifteen dollars an hour, and for your certified employees, there's going to be an average two and a half percent increase. Well, on top of that, the retirement rate's going to go up from, up to twenty-four point one nine percent, and your health insurance is going to go up to almost seventy-four hundred dollars per employee. So all that being said, this is going to be a huge year as far as the budget, new money going into salaries and benefits. The question is how much is going to be paid for the state, how much is going to be paid for by local, and how much is going to be paid for by federal? And I wish I had a more definitive answer for you right now. I'll just give you an example, let's say that in Title I, which is a federal program that is going to cost another hundred thousand dollars to keep the same people that we have right now because of salary increases. And let's say that the Title I budget doesn't go up a hundred thousand dollars. Well, within Title I budget, they've either got to cut something else or cut a person, but one way or another, they've got to absorb that hundred thousand. The chances of Granville County being able to pick up all those issues that are programmatic are pretty small. So there's got to be some programmatic changes within Title I to absorb the hundred thousand, unless it's, that's not a real number, by the way, I'm just making that up for an example. But to absorb that hundred thousand dollars within their budget. So we talked about this earlier today, at some point, the departmental folks, the people that are in charge of these programs will need to come together to meet with staff, executive council, to be able to determine if we do take these cuts or if, once we know what those elements are, what are we going to do to adjust our program? But if you adjust a program, it's affecting kids. Right? It's one thing to put it on paper, you can put a number on the paper, but when it rubs the road, it's affecting kids in one way or another. But I think it's probably the point where some of those decisions are going to have to be made on the front end as opposed to wait until September of twenty-four as to how those are going to be handled. This year, just to reiterate, this year, the state changed the minimum to thirteen dollars an hour for classified employees, and just so you'll know, they did not provide enough funds to cover that thirteen dollars an hour. Okay? So the premise of our budget is that they're probably not going to provide enough for the fifteen dollars an hour too. So that's why we want you to kind of remember that in totality as we go through some of these numbers, that we're making the assumption that the district's going to have to pick up quite a bit of that expense to get folks to the fifteen dollars an hour.
Who would have to approve raising that pot of money? The legislature or the Department of Public?
The legislature. That's a good question. The Department of Public Construction just allocates this budget based on what is given by the General Assembly. And so the General Assembly would have to approve that, and I'll mention this again, we've been working with several school systems and actually even a couple of counties have asked for information. If there's ever a time that the counties and the school systems need to work together, it's now because employees are going to be upset when it affects the number of positions that are available at a particular school. They're going to go to you, you're going to say, we were funded by the state, we're funded by the county commissioner. The county commissioner's going to say, what? We don't know anything about this. It'd help if collectively statewide, not just Granville County, the schools and the counties could get together and make this pitch to the state, thank you for going to fifteen dollars an hour, but you're really not doing it, here's what it's going to take to do it. And there was a survey that went out last year that the districts filled out, that told how much it was going to cost to get to the fifteen dollars an hour, and that's not the amount that was funded.
Yeah, they give a reason why they're not funding it.
I wish I knew, I know one reason is because when we're talking about programs, the dollar amount that's increased is primarily for teacher assistance of what we call non-instructional personnel. There's a specific allotment for those categories. Well, I'll just use the EC budget as an example. I may have two clerical people in my EC department that I pay out of my EC budget. There's not an increase in the EC budget for this. Remember, EC's got on a per-student basis, you've got to pay for whatever you can out of that dollar amount. Well, those two clerks that are paid for out of that allotment, they're not getting additional amount to get the fifteen dollars an hour. And I could go down a whole list of programs, but that thing, since we've been talking about EC, that would just be an easy example to understand. So those programs that are paying for classified employees out of their program dollars are not going to get the additional money to pay them that fifteen dollars an hour.
Traditionally, the funding source is where the money comes from. For example, if teachers are given a cost-of-living raise for base teacher allotments, then the state pays money for all the state-paid teachers. The federal and the local has to absorb that within the existing money unless you get additional local dollars from the county commissioners. So the state is, the premise is, the state is always funded for state positions. What we're saying is when the thirteen dollar, they didn't fund that, and not And now it's going to be even greater because, you know, you have less employees that didn't make thirteen dollars. Now, they're all at thirteen, they're going to fifteen. So you've got a huge amount of money that's going to be needed to make up just the deficit on the state side. And the fiscal analysts that work up the numbers for the state public school fund, they're not communicating very well with DPI. We'll just kind of leave it at that. So the message there is not relating exactly how much their shortage is. But where it impacts is Board of Educations all across the state, probably about eighty of one hundred and fifteen in the arena where you guys are with funding, are looking at shortages, a virtual tsunami of a shortage when you start talking about the enrollment decreases, the ADM funding, loss of positions, as well as now the fifteen dollars. And we're not even talking about the compression, you know, the number of employees that have worked here in Grahamville County schools fifteen years and are making fifteen dollars versus those that start day one that are going to be making fifteen dollars. So you got issues associated with that.
And that's the biggest, the last item on this page that we're going to talk about. You can see we've got it in bold, salary compression. And so it's one thing to get people up to the minimum. It's another thing to pay those that are already at that minimum, to give them what they have missed out on the last thirteen years. We won't go into detail, we've done that in previous meetings, but that salary compression over thirteen years is coming to a head now because the beginning employees will now be making what our experienced employees are making. So let's go to the next page. And these are some graphs that you've had on your previous budgets. We just put these here for informational purposes. But pretty much the county or local funding comes, is for local current expense, which is highlighted in green in your capital outlay. And so what are your revenue sources? Your biggest one is your county appropriation. And once again, you're having to share that with your charter schools. And we talked about funding for capital outlay, the primary sources that have sales tax and the lottery fund. There's some things you can't pay for with state dollars. And that's what a local has to pay for. Maintenance is a good example. The state will pay for one maintenance position out of the maintenance department. Everything else is coming out of local. And the logic behind that is, and I'm making this very simplistic, the way the Constitution is written, the state pays for instruction, the locals pay for buildings and maintaining buildings. Like I said, that's very simplistic. Lorie would probably be alive for that description. But so what's happening is the state is not holding up their end of the bargain on the instructional side. I gave you examples already, the assistant principals, the instructional support. So what's happening is locals are having to use their local budget to pay for assistant principals, to pay for instructional support. So you don't have the money that you need to pay for the maintenance, to pay... So it all comes together, but you're doing what you have to do. Somebody used the word a minute ago, Brazilian, I believe. You're doing what you have to do to make it work. But there's not a black and white line that says, okay, the state's paying for all of this. We're paying for all of this. You're paying for some things that the state should be paying for. Okay? A continuation request. Your continuation request this year, and we're going to go over some numbers in just a second. It's pretty much going to be what's it going to cost to give the raises that are required, which is going to be the two and a half percent for those that are certified or above fifteen dollars an hour. And then the expansion request will be primarily the compression issue. Okay? Let's go to the next slide, please. So once again, we talked about the charter schools. For every dollar you ask for from the county, they're going to have to provide a dollar twenty-eight because you have to share with the charter schools. So once again, if there's an effect, you're the one asking for... You're the ones at the forefront, I guess, of asking for the money. But whatever you get, you'll be sharing with charter schools. So here's the bottom line of everything that we've talked about today. What are we going to ask for? What do we need to meet the needs of these salary increases? And so roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollars is needed for raises just for your locally paid employees. And of course, your teacher supplement is a percentage of salaries, so that's going to go up a little bit. But the combination of those two items, you need about a hundred and thirty thousand just for locally paid employees and all of your certified teacher supplement. What's it going to cost to raise the retirement rate just for your local folks? Once again, it's a small amount, but hit twenty thousand. Several of those will add up in just a minute. See, health insurance is ten thousand. So between just the benefits, you're looking at thirty thousand and then a hundred and thirty thousand for locally paid employees. We're going to get the state in just a second. So what's that two hundred thousand on the reserve? We're estimating, and we have no basis to give of this particular dollar amount. It could be higher or lower. But we know that the state's not going to give you what you need to get to fifteen dollars an hour. So we're putting in a dollar amount, two hundred thousand dollars, as what you would need locally to make up for what the state's not doing for you to be able to keep those employees. If not, that's the equivalent of about five to six classified employees on the lower end of the scale. By the time you put benefits with the salary, you're looking at about thirty to thirty-five thousand. So you're looking at about six employees if you didn't have that buffer or whatever to pick up what the state's not doing. So that's our continuation request. Okay? Let's go to the next slide, please. Expansion. We say, wow, you're all adding a lot of things. No, we're adding the compression. It's just one particular item, but it's just the compression as a result of thirteen years of not being able to give raises or give them very minimal raises because of the state funding to classified employees. And so the one point one million includes, also includes your federal employees. I just want to mention this. This is a worst-case situation. The state's not going to pay for compression. Okay? So this one point one million includes your different funding categories of employees. Now, when we look at the continuation budget, the continuation budget did not include child nutrition's base increase. That was an assumption, but we think that child nutrition is not going to be able to absorb the full amount of what's needed to get to fifteen dollars an hour. What we don't know is what they can absorb. So there could be a bigger ask. If child nutrition comes to you and says, we can only pay for fourteen dollars an hour. We can't pay up to fifteen. Then by definition, the school system, the board, has to come up with the other dollar an hour. Theoretically, the school, the child nutrition is supposed to be self-supported. And for the most part, they probably have been. But going from what was probably ten, eleven dollars an hour eighteen months ago to fifteen dollars an hour is going to put a big dent into their financial situation. But we did include their numbers in the one point one because we did think that they'd be able to... Anything with compression is part of the one point one. Now, you do have one salary schedule that we weren't able to come up with a specific number because it's in bands. It's a very small number of employees. I think it's less than fifty, if I remember right, that may be paid off that scale. And so it won't have a huge effect on the number, but they're in five-year increments. And we didn't have enough information or time too to try to figure out how much it would cost to move them to a thirty-step scale as opposed to a six-band scale. So the one point one million is the big, is the big ask for the expansion. And on top of the continuation of three hundred and sixty thousand would be almost a million five as far as a local ask. Capital outlay is really just an estimate as to how much money we think you're going to receive from them. It's not really asking for, that's not additional money from the county. It's just estimating what those pots are that you're entitled to. And there's no specific projects associated with that that we were, that we know of. They have them internally, but we didn't know which particular projects were associated with those dollar amounts. So now you get to the last item. Okay, well, we need almost a million five to cover our salary issues. Whoops, we've got to add twenty-eight percent, you know, for the charter schools. So there's another four hundred and nine thousand for the charter schools that would be needed as far as the ask from the county. It's going to be, the additions we've worked with, we've pretty much been able to determine that double-digit increases, percentage increases are going to be needed to implement the salary issues. It's not necessarily realistic to expect that the counties are going to be able to do that in one year. And so there are ways that, if the counties are willing to work on this problem, there's ways to cash flow between what resources are available for the school district for the next two or three years with what the county may be able to do over a period of time to kind of make it work. And I won't go over all the details tonight, but we run a couple of options, unless you want me to, but we run a couple of options by some other counties that they're going to consider. Because I don't think your expectation would be that the county could come up with, in this case, it'd be over ten percent probably, calculate the percentage. It'd be a pretty big percentage in one year to absorb, to pick up the salary, pick up the salary issues. But over a three-year period or whatever, you're looking at maybe a four or five percent increase over each of the next three years, the county might be able to, you know, to work with that. Each county's different. I don't know the tax situation, the political situation here, but there is a, there is a way to work with that. It's not so overwhelming in one year.
Some of the things we've talked about, I think in our last presentation here, we've done so many of these presentations, sometimes it runs out. I talked about classified employees where we interviewed them across the state, and they haven't had raises and so forth. And we're talking about what's happened in the economy now, you know, with Starbucks paying seventeen to nineteen dollars an hour food line. We saw where Walmart's moved, it was twenty dollars an hour, fifteen, sixteen. The competition out there for our employees. I noticed today, some of the latest statistics, there are one point eight jobs in this country for every one worker that's available. So that, you know, the shortage is huge. And what does that mean as far as for recruitment and retention of employees within the district? And what we're finding out across the state too is cities and counties have, their salaries have not been frozen for thirteen or fourteen years. They've given raises. They're in control of the tax, you know, property taxes, property taxes have not gone down. So cities and counties, so they're hiring a lot of the IT staff, bus drivers with CBL license, private economy's booming. So, you know, where do you stand as board members looking at, how do we recruit and retain staff within the school district given the competition from government entity, almost everybody? And really, quite frankly, school boards have kind of become sitting ducks and training grounds for other employment entities. And, you know, our insurance program that used to be a big draw, when we interview classified staff now, they talk about, well, I've got four children. I like my insurance plan, but it's costing me seven hundred dollars a month. Once I have the insurance, I don't make enough money to feed my family. I mean, we hear it time and time again. And it's really a revelation when you talk with classified staff members. And really, a lot of beginning teachers are in the same boat. So, you know, you're in a real bad situation as far as trying to come up with the resources to alleviate this depression that's huge. And as Ricky pointed out, trying to develop a multi-year plan to get the commissioners to buy into, to try to help you fund it. However, as we say everywhere we go, the commissioners cannot absorb everything. I mean, there has to be a plan together, concerted effort with Board of Educations to try to see where you are. Now, there's also a funding study that hasn't been updated in the last couple of years, the NC Public School Forum. We encourage each of you to kind of look at that. You may be very familiar with that. Ricky and I checked some numbers before today's meeting about relative effort and then actual effort. And your commissioners are doing a good job of funding you. And I think that needs to be noted. You know, the amount of money you're getting from the commissioners is very proportional to the tax base you have here from what we've seen. And again, but with thirteen-dollar minimum, the fifteen-dollar minimum, and the lack of state funding, we're kind of being a little bit redundant. But it's placed you in a very precarious spot as far as trying to balance your budget out. And you're required by law to have a balanced budget. So therein lies tonight's presentation.
If I recall, are we, is the state of North Carolina working with a surplus right now?
Over the last few years, I've got how many billions of dollars have been surplus? But they've been put back into tax cuts and, you know, do some of the tax rates. And so to answer your question, yeah, there's a surplus this year, currently. But if you go back cumulatively, which brings up the point, if something had been done gradually over the last five or six years for these groups, this group of employees, we wouldn't be having this issue right now. But it wasn't.
What is the reserve? It's way on that table, isn't it?
Well, there's two issues. They've got a huge rainy day reserve. It's going to be like Noah's flood for that rainy day. And then you've got the amount that's actually, the following year is not put into the budget. It's just actually, you know, put into the former tax cuts.
Well, you had a billion dollars of corporate tax cuts over the last two to three years. So the pie, pie shrinking of revenue sources. So even if they want to appropriate additional funds, the money, you know, is then constricted. However, states all across the country are booming now. The economy's booming as far as, you know, the amount of money, that's why interest rates are going up. But if you look at inflation too, as we all, we didn't talk about that, is at a forty-year high. We all know that on a daily basis when you go to the grocery store and look at what it's, what the cost of living is. It has not, that's not happened since back in the early eighties. So you really have a perfect storm now of where you sit at the ninth meeting looking at your budget. Because, you know, you start looking at, what are our Plan A, B, and C? What are our options? Well, that's where you are, looking at that and cutting existing staff. I think that option has already been looked at in the past. And now, you know, you've got unfunded mandates. If you look in the dictionary and try to look up unfunded mandate, it's a fifteen-dollar minimum put on by the state without exceeding the adequate funding to meet that fifteen dollars. That's prime exemplar.
So, Flor, do we want to continue this discussion and then take a break for ten minutes? Or do we want to keep going? How are you all feeling?
Not good.
I know anybody was getting antsy to...
Well, if it helps at all, we pretty much told you everything we know.
At the end of this discussion, are we taking action on something or is this...
So we have the option to take action. If, you know, we're feeling so moved to do something and take action, we can. Or we can just use this as an informational session and, you know, haul it over until the next...
Well, we really don't have a lot of time to work through this and get to the commissioners' own time. In history, that haven't been a part of state or local here in Grahamville County that's never funded us to the extent that we should have been funded. And I don't mean frivolous stuff. I mean, I can look at, you can look at what we have cut over the years to get to where we are now. And, you know, we thought, sort of cut to the bone, cut into them a little bit. And I don't, I don't see, you know, well, let me put it this way. I belong to the School Boards Association, which has lobbyists that goes to the General Assembly every day and lobbied for what schools need. And they were the butt-saw for us. But it doesn't seem to do a lot of good when it comes to, I guess, and I see it as on the list of things that the General Assembly wants done. School system is kind of way down on that list. And I don't, I don't know, well, I'm not going to get into the reason why I think it is. But, but schools are what's going to keep this, not on this counter, this state, and the way we educate children a lot, to keep, you know, moving forward. And if you look at it from their perspective, the leadership in lobbying, don't feel that way about it. And, you know, I might be preaching to the choir, but you've got to preach to whoever's there. Really. And if you look at... And, and if you look at what we need in order to continue to do what we've been doing, and we've been doing that shorthand, really, it's gonna get a lot worse. So, the question becomes, what can we do about it? And all we can do about it is ask the commissioners to do differently to us, what they've been doing. And, and state also, I mean, when I talk to this Association of School Boards, I'll be having the same conversation about, you know, I don't know how hard you guys work over there, but for some reason, you need to work hard. Because there are people over there that needs to understand that they need to increase what they give us to operate with.
You are preaching to the choir.
But I'm gonna keep preaching.
I'm, for one, this, I guess this is just something that just bothers me, several years ago, the General Assembly, whoever the powers be, they cut back on teacher assistance for first grade classrooms. Now, they say, what's wrong? That the reading scores, blah, 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 blah. But that's where you really had the opportunity to intervene. Did six, seven grade, you try, but the early grades are where it's needed, that was cut. Then you cut something, and then the scores are not what they want, and they said, well, you, you don't use the money, right? It's just a vicious cycle right now, and people need to recognize that our prepaid programs and our early childhood programs and primary grades, they need that teacher assistance, that's right, I don't think we're going to get that, but that just bothers me that, that we've been cutting some areas that are really crazy.
We had some programs in this county over the years that really have benefited, and one, one that I can think of, we had a program at one time called Crave Classroom.
It's okay.
And the whole idea, those people have been around for a while, might remember this, but the whole idea was to, when a child was born in this county, somebody within the county would make sure that that child got what it need from the time they were born to the time they got to kindergarten. But if you think about that and how much money it takes for a program like that to really be successful, because, you know, one child was born, you might be all right, but if you got fifty or a hundred, then you can't do it. I mean, we don't have money to do it. And that's why programs like that in this county have not been as successful as they could have been, which all sort of leads us to where we are. Children out there that needs help to be educated and finances is standing in the way. I finished my sermon.
Is there any other proposal to vote for that's running?
Yeah, I have a proposal. First, you know, we're hiring, I gotta get my permit, you know.
You know, the real, the real issue that we all face, and it's come home really with what we're talking about, is do, does the General Assembly and our local commissioners view education as an expense or an, an investment? And there was at one time, a little bit of a change in attitude in terms of the commissioners, in terms of raising the supplement by a million dollars and stuff like that, saw it as an investment. Today, that's completely gone, completely gone. And, and clearly, what's going on in Raleigh, we're, we're a nuisance. And let's face it, that's reality, and we're gonna have to work or figure out how to work in this current environment, because we're seen as a nuisance all over the state, and it's a shame.
Dr. Who, seven, eight-year-olds don't vote, so.
Exactly.
Yes, if they could vote, they'd have more attention.
But how can they be so stupid? When you think about it, where's the investment in our schools? And we're not gonna go anywhere without good schools. I know, I shouldn't use the word stupid, but I'm the one.
Do we have any idea how many teachers or physicians that we are losing to attrition at this point so far this year?
We've not made any cuts yet.
I, I'm, I'm saying, how many we have retiring or we don't want to...
Can you give me a quick number real quick? While he's looking that up, I, I would say that exactly what you guys were explaining earlier, I, I saw firsthand as we ran into a former Grand County employee who was a bus driver, who said that, you know, he has a CBL and everything, and he's actually working less now and making more money than when he was driving the bus five days a week. So, that, that's gonna be hard to compete with.
Well, you know, it, it, you know, sometimes, you know, when you think about it, it looks like the state is putting perfect schools out of business. I mean, you think of what we're gonna have to do in order to meet the needs of these six thousand plus kids that we have, next year, when we have to decide whether we gonna cut five, or ten, or twenty, or how many positions we gonna cut, in order to balance our budget. Now, we have to start with the commissioners, you know, the decisions we make, always, and I've always said, you need to figure out what it is that we absolutely need, and our people say, well, we're not gonna get that. And I'm like, well, if it's what we absolutely need, we need to ask for it, we don't get it. And, and I still have that same position. So, when you look at what we did before us, are we going to ask for enough money to fund how many positions? You know, next year? And, and, you know, if we have two years to get thirty positions, then we need to have fifteen this year. I, I, I mean, that's logic to me, and I mean, I, I, you know, I don't know that that's the right numbers, but, you know, if we got two years to do it, and we need to determine how many we need, then we need to, we're gonna need to go and say, this is what we need, but this is what we need now, because, you know, that's it, I mean, that's the kind of thing that I see us working out of the board, are talking about doing it. Now, how we do that? Maybe we got a budget before this.
Let's please.
Yes, please.
I tell you, just listening to everything, it really sort of, really make you down, you get down, let me, what's that, what is that quote? The squeaky wheel.
It's just those.
We need to start squeaking. No, really serious, I'm listening to this, I just cannot believe that we're gonna sit down on this and accept this. No, you know what I'm saying, and you're talking about our children, you're talking about six thousand plus students in the public school system, knowing that we're not gonna be able to do what we need to do to properly get them educated and through the school, they are our future. Would they say, hey, is everybody gonna sit back and say, let it be, let it be? Or we just need to start taking some action? You know, we see other, all these different programs out there that people are going and standing in front of the Capitol and say, we want to be heard, we want to be heard. Do we want to be heard or not? You know, I'm, I'm just saying it, I don't know exactly, you know, how to go ahead, do we want to be heard or not? Right now, we're not being heard, bottom line. And it's been going on for years.
Yeah, it is.
It's been going on for years, and, you know, like I, you know, said, and I'm happy to be on the board, I didn't come up in this school system, nor children in the school system, but it's time to be heard to benefit our six thousand plus students, it is time. And, and, you know, if we're just gonna sit here and take it, well, hey, that's what we're gonna get, we're gonna sit here and take it, five, six more years, we'll be having this to reminisce on to.
And the response to the, our budget last year was by the Commissioner's public thing. I wish they keep asking, stop asking for more money, they have less students, and they keep asking for more. They already get forty percent of the budget.
So, I have a question, knowing that we submitted a lower request last year of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and that we still denied, do we want to just go gangbusters and ask for the full two million and say, if you can give us anything more than what you gave us last year, that's great? Because we know, I mean, I'm just curious.
We need to ask.
Yeah.
I do too.
But we also have to have a plan.
That's my position.
We also have to have a plan.
All the time is to ask for what we need and explain why we need it. I mean, that's all you can do.
Explain it, explain what's happening at the state level in terms of not finding what they require it, say it.
Exactly. Now, we talked about, you know, like you said, the state level, the General Assembly, and then, of course, by the county with the commissioners, so you're saying that the state association of, you know, board go out there and they really, really just push real hard to get the General Assembly to act, and they have been unsuccessful. They have been unsuccessful.
I won't say they've been unsuccessful because they like for, lobby for a lot of things for schools, for other things.
Right.
But that relates to what we actually need, physically or financially need, I mean, it's always short of what we, not only Grand County, but the other hundred fourteen school systems also.
Right, right, hundred fifteen other systems, yeah.
As, right now, as we're sitting here, there's a hearing in City of Oxford, the two more subdivisions that will be out close to off of ninety-six north. Now, whether those houses will bring more students in this end or not, I don't know, but, um, they look pretty big, so.
There's a lot going on.
There is a lot going on.
Yes, it is.
That could affect students in this system, but it's not here now.
Yeah, but we have to do the best we can by keeping our program strong.
So, your question was about retirement, right? So, there are twelve certified retirements effective for July one and beyond, and they're non-classified for twenty twenty-one.
There'll be some...
That we've already received, you know, so remember, this is...
That's just as of now.
Exactly.
As of now.
You'll get more as the school year comes, because the end of the school year.
Yeah. And of course, we don't have that figured out, and we want you to, but they can't all be in the area maybe you need them to be, there's, so sometimes that's helpful and sometimes it's not, as we look at the decisions.
There'll probably be some more too.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So, do we want to take this as an action item, or do we want to take this as an informational item? If anybody wants to throw out and...
What would be, what would be the motion? I mean, where do we look? Look.
Well, we have to have a budget to tell the county commissioners, we're gonna have a liaison meeting scheduled for the eleventh, I believe, so our chairman vice chair of the meeting, we have the liaisons on that day to sort of make them aware of the direction we're going, and then we have a meeting scheduled for the twelfth. So, it can be, but we can have them to, we can give them information to grapple with, to put the budget together, thinking the way this would we like for them to think, and maybe come up with some figures, not having exacts from the state, but come up with some figures that might get us close to a balanced budget, to take, have liaisons take to the liaison meeting and have the Hill Group and Mrs. Vicki Hines begin to sort of play with, to get our budget balanced, but just some direction, they, they need some sort of direction, it doesn't have to be a final, but some direction of what we're thinking.
Well, my, my question would be this, when school open for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
Yes, sir.
We need a budget. And, well, this is what we're doing, of course, and my question becomes, what addition of funds would we need and what capital to be able to say to the commissioners, this is what we need in order to do whatever we need to do, just do a number of kids, we got a bunch of students there, I mean, this is an estimate, of course, but I'm sure, I would think that we can come up with a number to say to them, this is how much we need function, operate twenty-two, twenty-three school year, this is what we have, we need two million more dollars or whatever that number is, and that's where we start.
That's just the whole... I would like to say, I think we instruct them to go prepare to ask for the full amount that we've been discussing, and, and that is what they can take back to the gate, I mean, start preparing the county commissioners. We're just gonna ask for the full amount.
Is that a motion?
I can make it a motion.
Have them put together something, we're meeting May twelfth, is it? We need to, and then we formally adopt it at that time?
This can be on the regular agenda, Monday night as well, so we can bring this back to you Monday night as well. Is, is that all right with the Hill Group? Is that enough direction, or would you like more specificity?
We're actually gonna be on the other side of the, like, hours away.
We'll cancel that today. Really, really what you need is basically one number, what's county appropriation gonna be? If it's the full amount, then that's, that's the request, and there would be an action item for Monday night's meeting, the county appropriation, the twenty-two, twenty-three, the request is going to be X number of dollars, and we'll fill in all the blanks and all that, I mean, we've got enough information to do that. We, we, and it, it's kind of like you talked about, it's getting kind of close to the middle of May.
Yes.
I mean, it's just basically May now, so making a decision tonight would facilitate the process.
Maybe we should get the conversation going, knowing that a plan to be developed, if they can't fund the full thing, that'd be part of that liaison meeting, um, the eleventh? Part of that meeting is, okay, if you can't do the whole thing, how about we go to Plan B, and we can work on what we think that can look like between now and the eleventh, just as an option of, you know, if you wanted us to, to come up with another way, another way to get the same thing accomplished.
Hank, what kind of a motion should, explicit motion should we address that will make sure that we cover what you, you will need? Are you talking about a motion tonight or next Monday at your action meeting? A motion tonight?
Or Monday, Monday.
Next Monday night would probably be it, you know, the motion that the county appropriation we're gonna ask for will be whatever the, the full amount that we're recommending, and then we will build that budget based on that motion. That, that's the one number that just you have to ask for, and as a board member, as you said, if you don't ask for what you need, and then we realize in the past what's taking place, but the point is, when you take the oath to office, you're asking for what it takes for children, right, to fund a program, and that's what you're asking for.
So, we want to have that piece first and then Plan B, which would give us direction, direction and posture for the liaison meeting, which gives us something to look on, with the direct staff and the...
We need, so the motion that we're talking about would be for the, to ask for the full amount that we need to operate that smoothly. And then there'd be an explanation for why we need, what we need.
And the explanation can be, if we go back a couple of slides, like, explanation could be what they've put, or the potential motion requests.
Dr. Who, is there a motion to be made, how our motion to be made, act upon, at the Monday evening? I would just clarify, whether there's an intent or interest in making that motion act upon now, or making the motion at Monday's end. To the extent any board members feel like, we need a little bit more information, we want clarity on point A or point B from senior staff or from the Hill Group, you can pose those questions now, ask to have information or responses by the end of this week, so that you are prepared to act on any motion Monday evening.
Is that any information that you are feeling that you need beyond, we already got?
Well, my question would be, are the numbers going to change to me now?
No, it's not from our end, I mean, the, the, the board makes a decision programmatically where they want to do some things that we start from... where they weren't going to do some things that are, we start from the assumption that this is, this year is the baseline. So, what you see is us adding to what you're already doing. If you decided you were going to get rid of something, of course, that would reduce the number. But ours is strictly using this year as a baseline and adding salary increases, which is really your only increase in your budgets are all salary related.
The sooner that decision's made, the better. I mean, we, we realize that you as board members have to consider, but we've kind of presented a three sixty picture to you of everything and the way it's not going to change much over the next couple of weeks.
Does anybody else need any information? I make the motion that we ask them to prepare the budget, requesting the full amount that we have discussed.
Second.
Let's specify the full amount just for the record.
What was that number, two?
Well, it's going to be off, it's going to be the, not the capital, capital outlay will be a separate. When you ask money from the county, there's a separate request to capital, there's a separate request to current. So, we're taking the numbers off that last separate page. Will we be taking the numbers off that, the last column on that page? So, the first two items added together, the seventeen eighty-two, eighty, and the million four oh eight will be the current expense request, and the million five thirty-one will be the capital request.
Is the increase in capital request basically because of inflation or...?
Yeah, just your normal sales tax goes up a small amount each year. So, that was, that's a hit or miss, it's not a specific dollar amount. If that amount of money doesn't come in, they're not going to give it to you, so it's really just an estimate.
So, for specificity, we're asking for full funding of the continuation expansion capital outlay.
Ms. Lindsay, second to that.
Yeah, she is. Right up, this way.
That work? We're good.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great, so next is upcoming events and announcements. Thank you so much, Sean. We really appreciate it.
Thank you all. Thank you for letting us work with you, we appreciate it.
Thank you so very much. And thank you, board. For upcoming events, I think I'll be, the board, I mean, the district thinks I'll be the children. I'll be the night of kindness. Such a, such a evening event. Our next big and our final district impact event will be the Evening of Excellence. And that evening, we are highlighting several optimal students and adults in the district with our straight A's being recognized that evening, students with straight A's. We also, because of COVID and coming out of that, we will not be honoring perfect attendance because we've wanted schools to do what was right this year. Instead, we created a new category, and we've asked schools to present to us best all around. And we created that category where youngsters may or may not have perfect attendance. They may or may not have grades, but they may or may not have character. They may or may not have positive this or that. Best all around in a multitude variety of areas. So, we're looking forward to that. All of our ambassador groups will be recognized that night, and we will be crowning, naming, what have you, our teacher of the year, our principal of the year that night, and all of our adult superlatives. So, our assistant principal of the year, our custodian of the year, our clerical of the year. So, we're asking for those of you who can and would like to, don't have to, but this is a night we sparkle and shine. So, we will have one evening gown, and ball gowns, and glitter, and tuxedos, and bow ties with our suits, and we go way out. Yes, Dr. Who, I sparkle.
I said, I said, you don't sparkle.
Sparkle.
He said, you do it anyway.
We sort of step it up, and we put the red carpet out, and everyone will walk the red carpet, and they're going to, they're going to fist bump you for, you know, just safety reasons. We typically handshake, but we're just going to do the nice fist bump, and everyone will get their star pin and some medallions this year. So, we have lots of areas to celebrate that night. We will have two programs. The first program is on the elementary level just because of numbers. So, we will honor elementary students at six thirty that evening, and then secondary students and adult guests, superlatives and such, at seven thirty that evening. So, we're asking you to try to arrive, to beat the traffic, to get part, to come on and to get in around six P M. That will be held at South Granville High School. And you're going to have our tech team there and just really try to have a lovely evening that night. So, that's the last impact date. And then, of course, we launch right into graduations. Our first graduation is that of early college on the, I believe, twenty-first? Is it if I'm not mistaken? On the twentieth, the evening of the twentieth, at seven P M, our early college graduation. And that would be Advanced Granville Community College. Please come out and join us if you have questions about the roads. Please say Jackie Baird, and you're on Sura. And let's get ready for graduation season. So, I look forward to seeing everyone on Monday evening for our welcome hour scheduled for six P M. And we're going to try to be a merry pum.
Great, well, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.